Hello, everybody. Um, we have everybody here and um, we're gonna go through the beginning part here. I just spoke with Matt a little bit, so Matt is pretty much gonna conduct most of the meeting. I'm going to interject just for motions and things other than discussion. I think it'll, it'll work better continuity, uh, be better continuity. We have the agenda in front of it. Do I have a motion uh, for the approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Thomas?
I'll second.
A second from, I'll pick Rick. I think two people answered. Um, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Carrie?
We, we, okay, yeah, we.
Oh, we have to roll?
Yeah, one of the things that I just want to clarify is, and we're gonna, we'll get better if we do this, but we do need to roll call all votes. And so, um.
Let's start that one over again. So, how are you gonna roll call?
I'll roll call them.
Are you ready? Go for it.
Ashley?
Aye.
Disapproval of the agenda.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Motion.
Okay, um, nobody for public comment. And at this point, I'm gonna click my mic off. I'm gonna let Matt take over for the entire consent agenda.
Okay, so let me, uh, I am going to share my screen. And I am sharing this as much for the people that are watching, um, the recording as I am for anything. So, let me get this sharing going. And then we will start with the consent agenda. So, in the consent agenda, you should have the minutes for March 24th and April 14th, uh, financial items, the bills, the wire transfers, and donations. Cheryl, do you have anything you want to add to the financial items?
Um, no, I did get a chance this afternoon to go in and look at the bills. And everything was pretty much normal. Um, there were a few things I had questions on, but they pretty much self clarified. Uh, there were a couple of things that were missing from the printout that I had at the office, but I double checked and what was given to the board members was complete. So, it was updated for the board. So, as far as I'm concerned, everything was pretty kosher.
Excellent. Personnel items, there's a list of career increments. Those are per master agreements. Uh, it'd be my recommendation to approve those career increments. Um, we have a leave of absence for Ms. Kemper. And then we have a retirement, retirement notice from Linda Mayer. Any questions on the consent agenda items?
I had one question.
Go ahead.
Um, in the donations, um, we had an anonymous donation for pause packs for $500, which was wonderful. Lake Harry and Henry Lyons donated 150 and 350. And for the Booster Club donated for baseball bats. Is that baseball bats only for $900? Or is that baseball and softball and it was just a print?
My understanding is it's for baseball bats.
Um, is there a, a reason why there aren't softball bats being supplied or, um?
I don't believe they were requested. If the softball coach requests the softball bats from the Booster Club, I'm sure they would also fund that request.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the agenda?
So, if we vote nay, does Linda have to stay?
Well, that's a really good question. And I, I'm not sure how that works. Any other questions? All right, here, no more.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Uh, Cheryl, that was you?
That was me.
Cheryl, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, we're back to a roll call.
Excuse me, I was muted. We're gonna go backwards this time. Thomas?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Ashley? Moving on to then the communication items. I have, I believe it's four items. One second. First of all, I actually just found this out today. So, we had submitted, um, a grant to Prairie Cares. Um, our grant was linked to a bunch of activities that we want to be able to do to get started with our social emotional learning, uh, initiative starting next year. Um, has to do with, uh, some curriculum and some, uh, professional development. It also has to do with some community outreach and family outreach activities. And, uh, about 2:30 this afternoon, we were notified that we were fully funded to the amount of $27,188 from Prairie Cares. So, that grant, uh, was written in large part by, um, uh, Don Knoll, uh, Christie, um, Zimmer, um, Mr. Orline, uh, Jen Wurz, there was a, Ms. Homberg, there was a whole group of them that really worked on this Prairie Cares grant focusing on social emotional learning. And, uh, the good news is, is we were fully funded. So, that's, uh, um, exciting and that'll get us, um, moving down the social emotional learning route. Um, the second item I have is for the Reserve Center. I did, uh, receive communication that our request for change is going to be approved. Um, I'm waiting for the official document to see exactly what approved means, meaning did it get approved as I had it written? Or is it approved with some suggested modifications? But I did receive word that it is approved. It's in the process and now they're just, uh, getting the official notification out to us. It actually was supposed to be, at least the first communication said we would have it last Friday. I still haven't seen it. So, I did, uh, email again this week and, and she assured me, yes, it's approved and, and she's gonna check on where our official letter is. Um, so that's good news. We'll get moving on the, the demolition side of the, the project with the Reserve Center next. The facility project, just touch base. It's been a little quiet, uh, with the facility project, but starting the week of May 4th, you will start to see action around the school buildings, um, regarding the facility project. Uh, construction companies will start, uh, bringing their trailers in and stuff for the secondary site. And, um, with the boilers now, uh, turned off at the elementary school, you're gonna see contractors starting to, uh, show up at the elementary school too with the boiler replacement. So, uh, you will start to, to notice action around both school buildings regarding, uh, the facility project. And then the last item, I just want to, uh, make sure the board, uh, knows we're still working on commencement. Uh, Mr. Orline and, and a group of people are, are working on options with that. And so, that's still in the works. And, um, we are eagerly awaiting, uh, Governor Wells's next step with the stay at home order and where that's at. I believe there was supposed to be an announcement, uh, this week. And so, we will see what the, the governor has to say about that and what we can and can't do with commencement. And then we will get a plan in place and, and get that out to everybody. So, do know that that work, uh, continues. Those are the four items that I had. Questions at all for me? Okay, let's move on to committee reports. I don't know necessarily that there's any, um, specific committee reports that are, are pertinent. Um, I know West Central Ed has a meeting coming up, but aside from that, I'm not sure that we have a committee's, uh, reports to, to entertain. Am I missing anything?
The district technology committee.
Do you wanna just talk about that, Maggie?
Sure. Um, so we met earlier this month. Um, one thing that was reassuring is the teachers that were part of that meeting said that they're not seeing any increase of students not turning in homework that they were seeing in the normal classroom. Um, so that was something that was positive. Uh, they said that the students are really self advocating and sharing if they are having issues, um, specifically with bandwidth. And it's a great opportunity that we keep encouraging our students, they need to self advocate if they're having issues. Um, with anything, be in touch with their teachers. The discussion, um, next moving into the digital curriculum. And really, that's just kind of a holding pattern to see if we're gonna have some guidance from the state. Um, and we're just gonna wait and see what happens. Um, and then a kickoff meeting will happen. Um, then we discuss the Chromebook insurance. So, currently, um, that is being outsourced and we just moved from three years coverage to four. And so, the conversation just moved to will we be better off doing that internally? You know, what is the potential of training students to do some of this work? Um, and right now, we have about a 20% um, breakage rate and that includes everything from, you know, broken keyboard to a broken screen. And so, I, I think it's interesting to go down the road of, is this something we could do in house? But, um, at this time, we're gonna continue to outsource it. Um, the reason why it got brought up in the first place is there were some delays with a company that we're utilizing and getting our devices back. But that's really cleaned up and we're getting them back in a timely manner. Um, so one of the commitments was, was that this group is going to spend the next few months really just looking overall at the one to one initiative and what that really means for the future. So, uh, you know, would we allow students to buy these devices after the four years is up? Uh, looking at, you know, some of the best buy options. I'm just different things, but we really need to look at what this one to one initiative is for the future. Um, some of the things to consider is that, um, if students bring in their own devices, currently, they can't take, um, the state testing because the security needs to be managed by the school. So, I mean, there's little things like that that really need to be figured out. And I'm sure, um, as more and more schools are facing this, those conversations, um, will be brought in and maybe there'll be solutions for people being able to take testing, you know, on their own device. Um, more to come on that. I mean, that's really, we don't know. Um, the other thing was Mary had brought forward a list of subscriptions that were from the elementary school and just kind of questions like, who approves all these subscriptions that they have? I mean, everything from fast forward, bash bridge, spelling city, I mean, there's a whole, um, list available. And so, one of the things again was should, is that something that should go to, um, a committee to pilot things first or to the tech committee? And also really thinking through some of these subscriptions, you know, are they really necessary? Are we having subscriptions just to have them? So, we have something digital, but really, you know, kind of pushing everybody to think holistically about what we're subscribing to. Do we really need it? Um, and potentially bringing it to committee first. And so, that was kind of the gist of what was discussed at the meeting. Matt, am I missing anything?
No, I think that's an excellent summary. Were there any other committee reports that people had? Okay, then maybe we could, let's move on to our student representatives. Uh, Ashley or Paige, do you have anything?
Sure, I'll go first. Um, I've noticed that as the weeks go on and gets easier, um, we get used to like the schedule of this remote learning. And I've especially noticed that with my sister. Um, she definitely is more comfortable with it and doesn't complain as much, which is really nice. Um, I wanna say a thank you for the senior signs. I don't know if you guys have saw them, I'm guessing. Um, it's really awesome just to be recognized, I guess. And then, um, as you can see behind me, I have my cap and gown. So, that's really surreal. And then, that just kinda leads to a lot of unknowns, you know, um, like with graduation and baccalaureate. And even the things from like yearbook distribution and like our Chromebook return, you know, cause it's like, we aren't gonna be coming back to school next year. So, it's not like the seniors can just get these things when we return in the fall. And, um, like personally, I'm a planner, so it's kinda hard, like not knowing what's going on. And I don't know, it's just kind of like unfortunate that we don't know how our year is gonna end or like our career is gonna end even. Um, but I do appreciate how like we get emails, you know, and we're kept in the know. I do really like that. Um, and it makes it a little bit better to handle. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ashley. Paige?
Um, I do agree with Ashley. It is getting a little easier with the distance learning and the, um, with the Google Classroom and Google Meet stuff with, um, getting good stuff to teachers and handing stuff in and stuff like that. So, it is getting a little bit easier and they're getting more easier to work with and stuff like that too. Um, yeah, I also received my girl's tater gown, so it's getting closer. So, hopefully we do have a ceremony for those graduates. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's move on then to, there is no old business, so let's move on to new business. Uh, the first order of business, item A is the list of the class of 2020. The board does have to approve, uh, diplomas for the class of 2020. All of these diplomas would then be dependent upon, um, final administrative approval. And that is your secondary school administration that would make that determination that every graduate has met the graduation requirements of the district. Questions regarding the class If there aren't any questions, then we take a motion.
I think there might be.
Okay, go ahead.
Somebody sound like somebody had a question.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion. We have a motion from Rick. Do we have?
From Cheryl? Yes.
From Cheryl? Okay. Um, any further discussion? And then we'll move on and back to Matt.
All right, Ashley?
Aye.
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's move on to item B. Item B is the policy, uh, committee first reading, uh, policy committee members. If it's okay with you, I will just run through these. And then if we have any questions, you guys can, um, take care of the questions. Uh, the policy committee met, uh, met on April 7th, and they reviewed three policies. Policy 532, which is the use of peace officers and a crisis team can remove students with IEPs from school grounds. Policy 533, the wellness policy, and policy 534, our food service meal charge policy. Um, policy 532, the suggested change is actually just a minor change that has to do with seclusion rooms. The policy committee did agree that we would put the language into our policy. However, it is important for board members to know that neither of our school buildings has a se- a seclusion room. So, when you actually look at the, um, language and the dates and deadlines for reporting, Painesville area schools does not submit those reports because we do not have a seclusion space. Um, some of you might be more familiar with the term of a timeout room. Um, but a seclusion room is, uh, where you would send a kid and for, to isolate them. Um, and they would be confined to a, a smaller space. Uh, neither one of our school buildings has those. And so, we aren't, um, actively reporting on use of our seclusion room. But that was what the change was. That was recommended by MSBA. I do think it's good to adopt it. Um, but just know that right now, it doesn't have necessarily a practical impact at Painesville area schools. The wellness policy is really brand new. Um, it is significantly changed. The, the large, uh, changes are to the sections three, four, five, and six of this policy. And it really is, uh, moving away from, uh, some wellness suggestions to actually having very specific wellness goals. These goals are stipulated by state statute. And so, that's where MSBA's model policy is coming, um, at these goals from. So, if, this is really a brand new policy compared to the wellness policy that we had on, on record before. Um, it is our recommendation to approve it. Um, this is one of the things when we are up for our next food service audit, that our MDE auditor will come out and be looking to see if we have the most recent, uh, wellness policy on, um, our list of approved policies. And the last one that we talked about was policy 534, which is, uh, the food service meal charge policy. Um, we actually have, have, I think, got this in a final copy form in which we could get rid of our procedures. So, we would just adopt this policy. This policy would be posted. And then we don't necessarily have to have these procedures hanging out there because our policy now has enough guidance that it really does talk about, uh, day to day operationally, how we, we handle, uh, meal charges. Uh, for all board members, it's important to know that at Painesville schools, no student is denied, um, a hot meal. It doesn't matter what their balance is or what their account is. They, they all go through the lunch line and, and do get a meal. Um, the other thing that is important to know is our all account, uh, I can't speak. Our à la carte service, that has now been changed and it is cash only. And so, there were some minor modifications to the meal, uh, charge policy, just because that's our situation here. Um, but it'd be the recommendation again to approve policy 534 as first reading. And then it would replace these procedures. They would just all be wrapped up into the policy. So, that's kind of the overview summary. And at this point, then, we would, um, take questions and policy committee members, maybe you have other things to add as well.
Question about lunch?
Lunch and breakfast.
No, just a question about, um, lunch. Is the current, I, I thought I remembered the current it being if you're, if you're in, what do you say, default, um, on your account, that it's like a peanut butter sandwich or something. So, you're saying you can get a full hot lunch? With the new policy?
With the current practice, all students get hot lunch regardless of what the balance is in their lunch account. There are no, uh, students that are going through and getting just a peanut butter sandwich or an alternative meal. Everybody goes through and gets, uh, whatever's on the menu for that day, whatever their selection is.
And what does the cash account for the à la carte mean?
Ashley and Paige will be able to address this much better than I. Um, but the, the, um, cash for à la carte would be things, um, like extra milk. Um, what else do they sell? I'm, I'm just trying to think of what they sell at the secondary. Ashley or Paige, can you give her some samples of what's at the à la carte station?
Um, there's cookies, muffins, like parfait things. Um, I don't know.
Juices.
I didn't, just a bunch of random stuff, I guess. Juice, water, stuff like that.
Not so much what's available, but can you actually pay cash? Cause last time I went and had lunch there, I needed a lunch number. Um.
So, with à la carte, the only way, like you can get stuff is with cash. But, so you do have to enter your lunch number, which I don't really know why, because it doesn't go, I don't know, maybe it does like technically go into your account, then they replace it or something. I really don't know why we have to enter our lunch number. But I know like last year, we could just walk up there and enter our lunch number and it took it right out of our account. Where now you actually have to have, whatever it is, 50 cents for a dollar in order to even get what you want. So, I guess I don't really know why we still enter our numbers.
I can answer while we're entering your numbers. So, the, the, uh, the student identification or the, the PIN number that they're entering, that is to be able to track a, a, um, a record or a history of sale for a, a student or a family. So, if a family were to call up and wanna know how much money they've put into their account and what's been charged out of it, the only way, or, or, um, what's been put into their account and what goes out of it, the only way we can track that is if we accept cash at à la carte, if we have that purchase tied to a, a student PIN number. Because then we know that that would go into their account and come right out of it. Otherwise, we would have no way to be able to give some sort of like sale history or anything like that to a family if they ever would have requested it. That's the only reason why kids are asked to put in their, their, uh, four digit, um, lunch number for the à la carte items. Policy committee members, do you have anything that you want to add as far as anything with the policies or first readings? Again, these policies then would be posted for 20 days. We would then, um, have them for second reading and approval at May.
I'll speak for everybody, but I think you covered it pretty well.
Okay, I'm not seeing anything else. So, then I think we would entertain a motion for the first reading of policies 532, 533, and 534.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And we will do a roll call vote. Thomas and Rick, yep. Uh, Thomas?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Ashley? All right, let's move on to the roofing project. Um, let's see, that's item C. So, we have a segment of, uh, our roof at the secondary building that is up. Um, just to kind of continue that, that constant loop that we're kind of making on these roofs, that each year, each summer, we're, we're going about and, and reconditioning and repurposing, um, repairing, uh, a segment of our roof. We had bid opening for this on April 21st. Um, I will tell you that, uh, usually in a typical year, um, I did check with our, our architect. Last year was my first year. I think we had three contractors that came out and submitted a, a qualified bid for our work that we did last summer. Um, so I, I asked Evan after we opened these bids and stuff. I said, so, you know, it's, I think it was nine bids or, um, eight bids. And I asked him, I said, what, is that pretty typical or, or where's that at? And, uh, he said, no, he was very surprised that this was the level of interest that we had. Um, again, what we have set aside was $125,000 for this project. Um, and we're gonna talk about that coming up in the, in the agenda as well. You can see on the summary sheet, our low bidder was Horizon Roofing at $85,333. It was a qualified bid, um, with all the requirements needed. And you can see where the other contractors came in as well. Be my recommendation to approve the Horizon bid and to get a notice to proceed out to them tomorrow if that is what the board approves. Questions regarding the, uh, roofing for the summer?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Well, what is the unit price? What, what does that reflect?
Uh, it's a linear foot, uh, pricing. So, what it is, is we have identified a segment of roof that we want them to re, um, repurpose, re-roof. And, uh, if they get up there and there is, uh, an additional, or we have to add square footage or, or linear feet to it, that's, uh, the, the base price that we've agreed that before the project starts, what the linear foot price would be. Um, and so, it was just a requirement of the bid that everybody needed to give us that number, um, just so that we know going into it. If, if they get up there and all of a sudden they find wet insulation or something and, you know, they don't just wanna necessarily stop it at our defined boundary, it only makes sense for them to add some linear feet. Um, and that's the base that goes into the formula then we would use to calculate the price of the additional, um, space on the roof that they're redoing.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions regarding the roof bid?
I have a question now that you've shared that. So, looking at, um, looking at that bid then, it's one of the higher ones, right? On, so, would we have any idea on what that potentially could be? I mean, it's hard, it's super hard to know. I understand that until you tear into things. But being it is one of the higher unit prices, like, what would that be reflective if we were replacing a significant moat in this, like, like this, I guess? Is it actually ended up being higher?
Yeah.
Probably don't know that, but I'm just, it just seems like that's a, a bid low on that area. But if they know there's gonna be a lot of replacement.
Right. I'm actually really happy that Horizon Roofing- I'm actually really happy that Horizon Roofing is the the roofing contractor. They have been out doing roofing work on our buildings, probably, I believe, for the last five to seven years now. They've been the same contractor. So that actually, in my mind, is the ideal contractor for us to have as the low bidder. They know our roof. They know exactly what's up there, what isn't up there. If there's anyone on this list that I think is probably giving us the most accurate bid for what we scoped out for work, I would bet it's probably Horizon Roofing because they've been up on the roof the last seven summers and they know exactly what's going on up there. So I'm not concerned about the unit price. I it just, my experience with Horizon last year, there was very little that came up as far as what was in the scope of work. We did ask them to do some additional work since they were out here. And given the fact that right now we've earmarked a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for this project, that might be something that we explore is could we actually take and and accomplish a little larger segment than what we originally had scoped out? And so that's something that Evan is is going to come out and take another look at at our roof and and see if there's something that makes some logical sense to kind of get us closer to that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that was was roughly set aside in the budget.
Makes sense. Thanks for clarifying.
Yep. Any other questions regarding roofing?
No, just a comment, though, if we know the unit price and we know the size, I mean, we could get pretty much a maximum amount of how much it would be, right? And it wouldn't, it wouldn't come close to the next lowest bid, even with that, right?
Yeah, now that we have their bid and we know what what they were bidding on as far as square footage that we've already specked out, I we have a very good idea of what what it is we can add to the project if we want. I can't remember if it's this week or next week, but Evan's going to come out and we're going to go take a peek at it and see if if we want to expand or not. Any other questions? Then we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Was that Thomas seconding?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we will go to a roll call vote. Ashley?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Maggie?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Let's continue on. Schools for Equity and Education. This is my my air. I I thought I had communicated with Schools for Equity and Education after organizational meeting that our school board rep has changed. Clearly, that did not happen. So Schools for Equity and Education is looking for for us to weigh in on three things. They need us to vote on adapt adopting the fiscal year twenty-one preliminary budget that was in drive. And I mean, it's it's their budget. I would, I would think it it could garner our support. It looks very reasonable. They would also like us to weigh in on the dues structure. And that is the new membership dues structure that would go into place. Our dues next year would be ninety dollars more than they were this year. And then lastly, they would like us to vote in the twenty twenty elections. They have a a cast or a ballot prepared that has the people that have been nominated, or you could do write-in votes. Since I received this and I saw that they still had Rick as our C representative, I have contacted them and now that is changed to Jake. But I thought this would be just easier since we had the the wrong board member in there. If we could just do this by the board and then in the future Jake will be able to cast those ballots. So I guess the first question is, did people have an opportunity to look over the fiscal year twenty-one budget? Were there any questions? Is there any concern with that budget? I'm not hearing any concern, so I'm going to go on to number two. Did people have an opportunity to take a look at the membership dues? We would see a ninety dollar increase in our C membership. Are there any concerns with the membership dues structure? And then lastly, is the board okay with supporting their, we're casting their ballot for the prepared members that were were nominated by the executive board? Or do they prefer to do a write-in ballot?
I break that question up.
Okay.
So ask us if we're in for the big ballot.
Is the is the big ballot acceptable by what C has? I'm seeing some head nods, okay? Okay, so at the end of this, then, what we will do is we will, I just want to pull up my attachment one more time. So we will vote yay for the fiscal year twenty-one C preliminary budget. We will vote yay for the draft fiscal year twenty-one membership dues. And we will approve all candidates as nominated by the C Board of Directors for the election. If somebody would be willing to make that motion, Linda will certainly get it down in the minutes correctly. I think we have Cheryl and Bruce both making the motion. Is one of you fine with with seconding it?
I'm fine with second.
Okay. So Bruce would entertain the motion, Cheryl seconded it. Any other further discussion about the C items? All right, roll call vote then. Ashley?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Maggie?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
All right, excellent. Let's take a look at item E. The twenty twenty-one budget tonight. The only thing we're looking at is facility questions. So this is still a work in progress. I just wanted to have a conversation kind of with the board about where things are at as far as the admin team and our discussions with with facility projects. There's a spreadsheet that is in your your drive folder. It it has some some yellow items, it has some green items, and then it has just some unhighlighted items. The yellow items really represent the the things that the admin team feels are a number one priority that that we really have to, for a variety of reasons, look at taking care of soon, meaning this next budget. The green items are things that if we need to to cut some things out, that's where we would first start. And then the white items, we're still working on and they either need to be moved to green or or yellow. So this is a working document. It's not something that is 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 ready to go. Just want to run through first before we start, if you scroll down to the bottom of this, I want to remind the board of kind of our revenue sources. So long-term facility maintenance is a is a chunk of money. It's three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that Painsville gets annually. These are exactly what they're titled. It's long-term facility maintenance. So you can use these dollars to maintain or repair. You cannot use these dollars for new items or or new construction. We have operating capital of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which you certainly could use for your facilities if you if you elected to. And then we have a a segment of our general fund that is designated for facilities. And that is dollars that that we have set aside for our facilities. And that's seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Couple of things with that. I mean, I'm not going to be presenting a budget or a preliminary budget that attempts to to spend all of that. There are some things that that we also have to fit in, like indoor air quality project and the things. And so there's other items that still are are working on this. But these are really kind of the three pools of of dollars that we look at when we're looking at facility projects. Questions at all on those revenue sources? Otherwise, I'll kind of walk through these things. Okay. So I'm going to start with just the yellow items and then I'll touch base on the green ones. And then I'll kind of open it up for questions or if there's other things people are thinking. So the fiber runs. Those, it's kind of, it's coordinating with our facility project because one of the things that's in our project is getting fiber into a pit that is, the closest landmark would be the north side entrance when people come to a football game where that ticket box is. That pit is going to be in that area of that that grassy area. And so with that pit being there and with a company having to come out and run the fiber from our building out to that pit, there is some savings for us just to have them stay on site and go from the pit and run a place where we think our new softball grandstand will be, run fiber to our football, current football press box and run fiber to our our baseball stadium press box. So since they're already out doing the pit construction, it it might make some sense just to do that immediately. High school locker room auto flushing in boys and girls restrooms. The auto flush is something you're going to see getting throughout all this, the buildings. We're just kind of taking them at at chunks and and going after them. That's something that that needs to continue throughout both buildings. The north curb at the elementary school and the kindergarten classroom sidewalk door four, high school, there's some cement work. Those are our bad spots that we need to address this summer. You can see the section of roof. That's where we have that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars set aside. You can see where that bid came in. The high school gym painting, walls and ceilings and banners. So this is the main competition gym, would be painting the the cinder block and and roof ceiling. And then we would also have new banners that would go up to kind of give a little cleaner look. This pricing in here, though, does not include the banners. Max is still working on on an organization or a company that does those and and giving us some options on what that might look like. Elementary computer lab painting. To me, that's a simple, low-hanging fruit. That one should be taken care of no problem. The secondary school nurses office. So we're trying to kind of coordinate services in the secondary school. You know, right now we have the nurses office down in the community ed office. And then the secondary office is in the what was the old high school office. So the nurse is going to move to that same office where the principal is and all of that. It just got, all those services would be coordinated. That would would be accomplished easily this summer. It says painting in there, but there's also some other supplies. There's a couple, some new cots. I think there was a little bit of plumbing work that needed to happen in that old nurses office as well in order to to get that usable. The courtyards at the secondary school, both of those, we're looking at getting those, having a facelift this summer with some some new landscaping and just kind of cleaning them up and sprucing them up some, getting the the trees away from the the roof edges and stuff so that they aren't creating problems with with the drainage on the roof. Student center entrance at the secondary school, that's the old high school library. That entrance would have a a large rolled garage door type thing. It'd be one of those things that when school's in session and that place is open, the the door would be up. If we're going to close it down or something, we would put it down. Office entrance, door between Jackie and Cassandra framing and tile. We would like to get a secure door that would be between where Jackie's office and Jackie and Max are, that's going to be more opened up. And then we would have a secure door. So where we keep our our records and files and all that, we would have a way to make sure it's good and secure each night and and over the summer. Cafeteria painting tables. The painting's actually done. If you're around the secondary school, go check out the cafeteria. It looks awesome. That was stuff that was accomplished when we were in distance learning planning mode. And then we are in the process of updating tables in our cafeteria. The thing you'll notice at the 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 desire is to get away from the kind of institutional cafeteria table and get some high-top tables and some lower table, just make it a little more personable that it it doesn't look necessarily like an institutional cafeteria when you walk into it. More of a kind of a lobby space is is what we're looking for. Furniture for our middle school lobby, the high school office and the high school student center. Those bids haven't come in yet, but I know David's working on those. We're kind of thinking that sixteen thousand number, we'll see what that comes in at. The elementary school kindergarten entrance, doors one and fourteen, so it's actually that would be the east wing. The the door one, right by the kindergarten rooms. You can see is it's got some glass issues, it's got some rust issues. And then if you go door fourteen, down by the third grade classrooms where they go out for recess, there's again some some door issues there. We would like to get those updated, probably take out those steel doors and put in aluminum is is kind of what we're thinking. But be those two entrances is what we would tackle. Water coil leaking at the elementary school, that's going to be a must. We aren't going to be able to turn our heating system on next year at the elementary school unless we fix it. Whoops. And then the elementary preschool plus room, one oh three. So there's going to be an additional, some preschool plus movement. And they're looking at potentially using room one oh three for preschool plus. Matt would like to be able to do some new flooring and and spruce that up if that's what what the plan is. And so that'd be kind of priority one. Priority two, then, some things right now that we've decided if if need to, they can probably go. Right now, there's a a plan at the elementary school for the cafeteria painting. We would like to get that done, but that could also be something we could push off for a year if needed. And then the storage room here at the high, at the secondary school. So the classroom that's right across from the high school office used to be a math classroom. That classroom now is used as storage for athletic equipment, so like the volleyball standards and nets, the basketball cages and all those things are in there. We'd like to get a double door that goes right into the cafeteria so that you could get things like, for instance, these long badminton nets that right now are stored in a hallway. You could have a double door, you could bring those right in from the gymnasium. You don't have to worry about maneuvering a ninety-degree turn with them and stuff like that. So that would be ideal. Again, it would be something that we could push off if if need be. The other thing I just want to keep in front of the board, it's not something that's happening now. I don't want to alarm anybody. But we are putting money out aside. We're trying to save money already and getting it, I believe it's for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year to be able to do a track upgrade. And by that time, our track will be end of life. It's very close already, so I'm hoping we can make it that far. But we will need to, at the minimum, resurface that track. And at major, we may need to do some stuff with the asphalt base layer as well. That would also be a golden opportunity to re-crown the football field and and get that landscaped right. And then the other question is, is an opportunity to also put in some drainage on the inside of the track to help that football field keep that that crown that we're gonna gonna redo. So I just put it on here. It's not something that we're doing for twenty twenty-one, but I want the board to be aware of it. It's going to be a conversation as we keep moving forward over the next year to year and a half. It's a significantly large project and we are in the process of of saving dollars in order to be able to accomplish that when that track is is needs to be replaced. So that's kind of the the high level. Oh, softball fields, I wanted to talk about that as well. There is still dollars, two hundred thousand dollars set aside next year for twenty-one, twenty-two. So we would coordinate the flipping of those softball fields, grandstand that type of thing with the finishing of the facility project. So there's still money that is also being set aside for that softball project as well. And that would would certainly happen. It's just, obviously, right now it's not part of the twenty twenty-one projects. Although the interesting thing is, without having a spring sports season, right now would be the time to do that. And we're we're trying to kind of investigate if that's, if it's And we're, we're trying to kind of investigate if that's, if it's feasible or not. I'm, I'm not sure it is, but we're, we're, um, investigating that one. Questions about projects or, um, thoughts?
I had a question.
Okay.
Um, it wasn't so terribly long ago, we, uh, put in new tables in the cafeteria um, for ease of movement and cleaning. Um, how are these newer tables with movable chairs and whatnot going to affect that? Are the custodians going to be affected? I mean, it takes a lot of time to move chairs and tables and the ones we've got now, you fold up, move over and you can do a whole floor.
Yep. And they'll be the same thing. It's just rather than be in the rectangle, they're going to be round. Um, they're going to have our logo on them. Uh, they'll, yeah, they'll, it'll be the, uh, similar. Um, you'll be able to pick them up and fold them in half and they'll go on casters. And then they can scoot them down the hallway and they'll be able to go through a, a single door if they want to. Um, I do know that the other thing that, uh, David's been talking about and Donnie has been, um, assisting him with is taking our, the, um, cafeteria tables that are in our, in the best shape and being able to, to use those for some other purposes. So, um, I don't, I'm pretty sure that those tables that have been, that are the newest of the bunch, I believe would be repurposed in other, other places.
Oh man, I've got a question.
Yep.
My curiosity is killing me on this one.
Okay.
South wall removal in high school gym is a future project. What exactly are we talking about there?
Well, what we are wanting to investigate is could you actually take the wall right now that's on the north side of the cafeteria? So it'd be the north cafeteria wall, which would be the south competition gym wall. Could you actually take that out? And have that be open space? So your competition gym flows into an open lobby space. Um, when you start looking at some of the new construction projects, you will notice that, that the, kind of the, the cafeteria lobby slash gymnasiums start to kind of flow together. And so that's the question that, that we're posing. Um, you know, obviously there are large structural questions that need to be answered in order to, to, uh, make a determination on that. But that's really what that conversation has been, um, around.
Okay.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay. As I said, this is a, continues to be a work in progress.
We have Cheryl.
Okay. Go ahead Cheryl.
Rest, wrestling room floor for new weight room. I didn't understand that one.
Yep. So with the facility project, the current wrestling room will obviously be moving out of there because there will be a multipurpose space that'll be a wrestling room in the addition. And so the per, the plan right now is to reuse the existing wrestling room as a strength and conditioning room. The thought with that would be that it would be more of this is where our teams would go for strength and conditioning versus the fitness center. You know, Matt is always trying to balance the, the fitness center use with members. And, and there's times during the year when that after school time and, and people are getting done with work. Members really like to come in and use the fitness center, but that gets really hard when you've got thirty-five football players in there, um, lifting weights too. And so we were thinking we could get that current wrestling room into a strength and conditioning space, which once, um, the, the current drop floor that's in there isn't really conducive to that. So that probably is, is something that is going to need um, some sort of a, a floor adjustment, some sort of rubber floor is going to need to go in there. Um, but again, that's one of those things Max is looking at some alternatives and some options for it.
Thank you. This, the wording kind of mixed me up.
Yeah, it's not worded the best. I, I will.
It's, I understand now.
Yep. Any others?
I just have a question. So we've looked at, you know, spreadsheet similar to this of what those future projects are. Are there any things that bumped off that were projected to be in the budget this year or the next year that just moved off? Or is, does this reflect everything that had been on, like what we had looked at in the past?
No, the, I don't really ever see things moving off of these. I see things more just getting added to it. Um, so I, I think really this is just an expansion of, of where we kind of picked up last time. The only other thing that I just want to make sure that the board understands, like for instance, our LTFM dollars. We have a certain amount of health and safety activities that we have to do by statute. Those automatically are coming out of our LTFM budget every year. So our total revenue is that three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. But there's about, I would say between forty and fifty thousand dollars that is health and safety related that, that we have coming out of there every year. Um, and that would continue and, and those health and safety things are not listed here. Um, but again, that's something that the final budget would plan for and would incorporate those, those same health and safety activities into, and things I'm talking about like our, for instance, our, our lift inspection, our fire extinguisher, um, inspection. Um, a portion of Donnie's contract is, is paid out of there. Um, it's our, our MACH OSHA inspections. It's all of those type of things that their annual health and safety expenses, they would continue to come out of LTFM, but they're not listed per se as a, as a project. This is really more just a list of, of projects, um, facility improvements and upgrades. Any other questions? Okay. Let's, uh, go real quick just to review upcoming meetings. Uh, Monday, May eleventh is the West Central Ed Board Meeting, six thirty PM. Maggie, I'm assuming that'll be a virtual meeting?
Sorry, I was like, looking at a different sheet. Um, I'm assuming it is. I don't think there's any intention to be in person.
Okay, so I
I'll look.
Okay. Um, Tuesday, May twelfth will be our work and learn meeting at six PM. Um, again, that will be, uh, here at the boardroom and remotely. And then, um, I did not list it, but I just want to make sure everyone is aware. Tuesday, May twenty-sixth is our business meeting for May, six PM. Um, again, secondary boardroom, and then we will have that be a remote meeting as well. Um, the only thing that could change that is again, we are assuming that the governor is going to make an announcement regarding stay at home and stuff and, and depending on what, uh, guidance there is with that for schools, that may change our, our plan. And as soon as that is, that will be a communicate, uh, communicated to everybody. But that's what I have on my calendar for upcoming meetings.
So I suppose this is my time to shine. Um, I move the
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thomas second. Any other discussion? All those, oh, we gotta do a roll call. I'm sorry. Ashley.
Hi.
Bruce.
Hi.
Cheryl.
Hi.
Jake.
Hi.
Maggie.
Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Thomas.
Hi.
All right. Thank you very much.